Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of April 10th, 2019. We had an executive session that started at quarter past six and we just adjourned. So I apologize for being a few minutes late. So as we start every meeting, I'd like to remind you that this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed. So please keep that in mind. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, also, would you join me in a moment of silence, please? Thank you all for coming. It's nice to see a full house. We've got a lot of ground to cover this evening. We're going to be discussing, if everybody has a copy of the agenda, several different things that are pertinent. So if you need to speak or you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I'll acknowledge you, come up to the podium, tell us who you are, and everyone will have an opportunity to be heard. And anyone have any questions before we get started? An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of March 11th.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? An entertaining motion for March 13th minutes.
So moved, second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? An entertaining motion for March 27th.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? An entertaining motion to accept the minutes of the school committee and Hanson Finance Committee of April 2nd.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? In unanimous. Student advisory report, Mark?
Hi. So Thursday, April 11th, tomorrow will be an early release day for the high school only so that afternoon and evening parent teacher conferences can be held. You can sign up with teachers through the Infinite Campus portal. Friday, April 12th, to celebrate spring, the Habitat for Humanity Club will be showing Dr. Seuss's Delorex in the Performing Arts Center from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. This is a free event for parents and their children. Popcorn and other refreshments will be sold and there will be raffle prizes. Children under 12 must be accompanied by an adult. Saturday, April 27th, the Whitman-Hanson Best Buddies will be having their fourth annual 5K/one-mile fun run/walk on April 27th at 10:00 a.m. The race will start and end at Whitman-Hanson High School. Participants have the option to either run or walk the 5K portion or the one-mile portion of the race. Registration is $35 for adults and $20 for students. Included in the registration is a Whitman-Hanson Best Buddies race tee-shirt. The link to register can be found on the school website. Saturday, April 27th is also the Whitman-Hanson Day of Service. All students, staff, clubs, and teams are invited to participate. As of today, service projects include working with Annie's Kindness Blankets, Camp Quaney, both Whitman and Hanson food pantries, Green Hanson's annual cleanup, Green Up, Whitman Public Library, and the Best Buddies 5K. For more information, please see Ms. Tannis and Mrs. Glimmos. For Duval, Tuesday, April 23rd, grade three, four, and five will be having their ELA MCAS. Friday, April 26th, the PTO is holding the annual Fun Day tee-shirt contest. Due date for all submissions is Friday, April 26th. You can pass designs into the PTO box in the office. Please write the student's name and grade level on the back of the design in pencil. The top pick from each grade will be on display until Tuesday, April 30th, and voted on by the students. The winning creation will be on their Fun Day tee-shirts. The rules are that all creations must be submitted on plain white paper and drawn in black ink or by skinny black Sharpie. No shading or coloring, and all creations must be drawn by Duval students.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone have any questions? Thank you. That was a lot of information in short time. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
First in your packet, we have the North River Collaborative Report. I think the first, this might be one of the easiest things we have to do tonight. The Board of Directors met with the Director of the North River Collaborative and when he submitted his collaborative agreement to Desi, they had him adjust and do some wordsmithing. As you can see on the front page of that agreement, he wordsmithed it, we looked through it, and our Board of Directors approved all changes to the collaborative agreement. We just need a vote to make these amendments and support our Board of Directors from the school committee.
And a motion to amend the agreement as presented?
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? In unanimous, thank you.
Conley waiver discussion. As you know, a few weeks ago, we had a little sickness issue at the Conley School. I want to thank Chief Grenow, our Nurse Leader, Lisa Tobin, and Nurse Julie over at Conley for supplying George and I some pertinent information early that Friday morning of the sick students and the potential norovirus-like symptoms that forced me to make the decision to close the school. Assistant Superintendent Farrow then called Desi to ask or inquire if we are required to make up that school day, and George will give you some information of what he found out from the department.
All right, so you have highlighted a couple of pages under education laws and regulations in your handout, and what I'm speaking to is the Student Learning Time Regulations, which is 603 CMR 27. What that says is that the day will need to be made up, the 185th day, because the law requires that all students go 185 days. When you read through it, there are different stipulations that say due to time of year, due to such things of that nature, already previous loss of days to weather. There is a way that says some of these things can be waived. There is also a provision in that under 603 CMR 27.06, which states that the school committee may ask the Commissioner of Education for a waiver. That would be a letter that's written from the school committee. Superintendent Simonak would write that letter, but the decision you have to make as a school committee is, do you want to ask Commissioner Riley to waive that day so that we all end, all schools and all students and staff end on the same day? There is, only the Commissioner of Education is the one that can say that. I would give you another piece that it will cost approximately $2,800 in busing in order to run the buses for that day for Conley for the half-day. There will be no kindergarten, and for the run will be half-day only because on that Thursday, the Conley School would go a full day. The other five buildings would go a half-day get-out, and then on the Friday, the Conley School would go for the half-day. So the decision that you have to discuss is, do you want to apply to Commissioner Riley with the letter asking for the waiver to not have school on that day? And just so your own edification that you know, it'll be approximately $2,800 to do that. Helene Betancourt from the DESE was the point person on that that I contacted, and we spoke twice on this.
Okay, so does everyone understand the options? We will, if we go one way, we'll be looking to the Commissioner to waive that day for the Conley School only. If we go the other direction, if we go the other direction, the Conley School will be finishing one day later than the rest of this school district. One actual half-day.
Half-day.
And it will cost $2,800 for buses. Okay? Seeing as it's two different motions, I'm going to let you enter into discussion, and then we'll hear it all and see which way you want to go. Is everybody okay with that? Mr. Boyce first, Mr. Small, then Mr. Trotter.
Well, I want to make the motion.
Okay.
The motion first.
Okay, go ahead.
Whether there's two or one, I motion that we write to Commissioner Riley and waive the day. And I'm stating that, and I didn't need to go on a tour yesterday to see this, I already knew it. The content of education isn't in the length of days or the minutes you spend. That is, that is very valuable time. But I've seen kids that have a continuity from a group of people that deserve millions of applause and millions of standing ovations in everyday work that they do. And I knew that, I've worked that with them, many of them. I'd love to return and help in their class, especially Mr. Jeffers, right? He was the first.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, so I got a long list. Mrs. McGann, the content is in what? These folks deliver, the paraprofessionals, the staff, and of course, the teachers. So my motion is to waive it.
Your motion is to waive it.
To apply for the waiver, yes.
Would someone second it? Second it. All right. We'll just, now you can continue with the discussion. Fred and then Bob.
Sorry.
And then Chris, go ahead.
If we apply for the waiver and they say no, then we're stuck to go.
Correct.
So they would get back to us on a timely enough basis.
One would hope, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to ask for the waiver, and I feel we have nothing to lose by asking for it. Especially, you know, you've got families that have made plans, you know, based upon the last day of school. You've, you know, perhaps siblings that are middle school or high school, you know, could, you know, cause quite a bit of dissension in the family as well. I think we need to be cognizant of that, so I'd be very, very much open to asking for that waiver.
Bob, I'm sure there's both sides to this question, but I was curious, did anyone ever look into hours? Could they make up hours over the next three or four months to do that?
No, because I asked that question because I thought we'd be okay, because we would satisfy the 900 hours at the elementary level. And Helene Betancourt was very, the woman from the DESE was very specific, saying that because the students and staff did not report, the day needs to be made up. After April 1st, it wouldn't be if you already had five snow days. After June 1st, they take it off the books. But the hours do not count. It's the showing up of the 185th day.
And to clarify that from George, if the staff had shown up, and if students actually came in for 15 minutes that day, staff or no, it would have been declared a day. Similarly, a few years back, we had an issue at the high school. Staff and students showed, were reversed back out, it counted as a school day.
Chris?
I was just seconding. So two things, for George and Jeff. What's likelihood of them, I mean, I'm sure other districts have had to do this before.
I know that somewhere, I don't know about this Commissioner, because I don't know any that this Commissioner has waived, but it has taken place that there was some roof issues that happened in Hingham. There were some in, I believe, Lawrence last year due to sickness and due to more structural, and those things were, there has been a history that waivers have taken place and been granted.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then just a second thing, let's think back to last school committee meeting, when we're discussing the two weeks for Christmas vacation, and everybody brought up time in the classroom. You gotta learn, gotta learn, gotta learn. So, and I mean, I'm okay applying for it, no problem at all, but we seem to have done a little bit of a 180 here with that, so.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes, your point taken, but this is a 180. This is everyone, and it's treating them on an equal basis in an emergency.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
No, okay, but I'm just, I just want to say.
But my point is, it's just kind of.
We're not taking a 180.
The next meeting.
We're treating everything as it is individually, but thank you.
I don't know.
Fred?
I think there's a very large difference between what goes on in the middle of the year in the classroom in January and what goes on at the last day of school or half a day of school.
And I disagree with you because, and again, we can debate this forever, but talking with my son, who's a high school student, I'll throw him right under the bus, you know, like he said, he goes, well, it's okay, we don't go back for that, but he goes, how much do you really think I, him personally, am going to do for those two days? You know, I'm gonna wake up late, hopefully get in on time, not get detention. I mean, and again, I'm not against any of it. I'm not against bringing them back early or anything like that. I'm just making the point, time is time, and I'm all for, especially saving money, because we're in a budget crisis to do it, but I just, I'm just making the point, that's all. I'm not against.
Mr. Jones?
Any timeframe on when they'll get back to us?
To be honest with you, it doesn't say, but I would assume that I would call Helen, because she gave me her direct line, we seem to be friends now, that I would let her know the day we submit it, and then I'd ask her those questions and could update you.
If you approve this tonight, I'll have the letter tomorrow, we'll get it out on Friday, and then George will pester Helen and say, we need to know, because we have families that need planning.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to know after April vacation from Desi, it's not a week for them, it's a work week.
Yeah.
I'd like to let families know within the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Jim?
Bob, have there been any cases, I know the Commissioner is new that, let's say in the Sinode Elementary might have been called off and the secondary came, are there any of those cases, would they have to make up school then as well, are the elementarys new, is that, you know anything about that?
Not with Commissioner Riley. Riley's first year, he's much more vocal, he'll let people know pretty quick, but we have no history.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Kevin? You good?
I guess there's a couple of things. I guess first of all, would there have to be any type of medical documentation or something from the Board of Health or, you know, that would get it to the top of the list?
No, all she said, well, under the regulations, you, because we're at the point where you would have to make up the day according to the regs, the letter would state that due to neural-like symptoms and viruses, we'd state how many absentees were there, and then we'd say it. We'd also then state that the reason why we're asking for the waiver is also a financial one. So we play it off, we would write the letter in that fashion.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing too, and again, trying to talk about, you know, balance and equity in a sense that you would have a group of folks that, you know, I guess worked the last day, right? So you try to balance that as well. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion to send a letter to Desi and try to get a waiver for the one day at Conley, so everyone can end school at the same time. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I guess, I guess we just have the Commissioner make the decision, I guess. See what he says. That's, you know, that's the way I feel.
And this will allow the Commissioner to render a decision and get back to us, and I'm pretty sure they're going to do it on a timely matter because it's approaching, so. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
You're the first.
Thank you.
Could be the first ones. First ones to tick off the commission.
Next on the agenda is the regional agreement discussion. I was going to turn that over to you, Mr. Hayes, as far as regional agreement.
We will, I believe that the town of Whitman still has to consummate the vote, and then we'll be moving forward with the rest of what we have to do for the regional agreement. It's pretty much cotton dried. I believe it's, do you know if it's on your agenda for your next meeting? I believe it is, correct?
It was voted on by the board. It's a little, it'll be on.
Oh, it works. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Unit B MOU, or MOA, excuse me. We noticed a typo on page four of the MOU that we, or MOA that we signed a couple meetings ago. We discussed it with the members of Unit B. The typo actually is, was on page four. For all other positions, year one actually had plus 1,000 next to it. That was a typo that we hadn't agreed to, so we subtracted that. So the MOA that you have currently is the correct MOA. Although it took $1,000 away from other members of Unit B, they agreed that it was a typo and we reform related that.
Kevin, are you good with it? Beth? An entertaining motion to accept the document has amended.
So moved, second.
Is there any further discussion? You're both okay with it? Any discussion from the committee? All those in favor? In unanimous, thank you.
Going to ask Christine Suko to come up, talk about year-to-date expenditures.
Hello, everyone.
All right.
The single page, we'll look at the revenues first. So as you can see, we received all of our assessments from both towns to date. The Medicaid reimbursement, we expect one more payment in, toward the middle to the end of June. We expect three more payments from Chapter 70. Chapter 71 transportation, we'll expect we get one lump sum payment in June. I want to bring your attention to the interest income. We had estimated $50,000. We've already brought in just over $74,000 and anticipate probably bringing in another $25,000 to $27,000. So we can anticipate that the interest will probably be somewhere between $50,000 and $51,000 more than what we anticipated. So that will go right back into E and D once we certify in August or September. The last two, the circuit breaker and the E and D, I've told you this before, I typically make these transfers in the end of June when we're beginning to balance out the books for the year.
Anyone have any questions for Christine?
The next set of documents you have are the year-to-date expenditures. Just want to bring to your attention that some of the substitute lines are over, and that is due to some paid leaves of current leave of absences right now. But then if you look at some other schools, they still have money in their substitute lines, so hopefully by the end of the year, those, all accounts can offset each other. Take a look at page seven. Towards the middle of the page, tuition to other schools. That is an increase over what we budgeted due to Recovery High Schools. That, we did not know that the students would be participating in there. School choice, looks like we have additional children that are going, that are choice out. In 18, we had 18.2 students, and currently, right now, in 19, we have 17 students. I believe five, four or five of those students choiced out to another school so they could be at Full Day K, and some also went to the TECA, which is the online high school program. Move on to page nine. Same concern that I had at the last meeting, special education costs. We're over in the contracted services piece, the legal, sped legal, special education transportation, special education tuition. So currently, right now, as of this morning, we have a deficit in special education of Also on that page, if you look down, about three-quarters of the way down, you see the McKinney-Vento, which is our homeless. We are currently running in a deficit of just over $8,000. Those are my concerns as of today. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Christine? No questions? Everybody good? Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine. As we move forward to fiscal 2020 and the budget, just like to update the committee on some of the meetings that I've had in both communities, conversations, and where information that I can present to you is where they stand. I met with Hanson FinCom a couple of weeks ago. Some of you were at that meeting. Good conversation back and forth. Hanson FinCom told us they were earmarking a 6.5 assessment for our schools at that meeting. A couple of budgets floated around in Whitman, Article II budgets with department heads. I was involved in conversations with those department heads. It looked like we went from a 4% assessment from a FinCom meeting to a 6.5% assessment that was discussed at the Whitman Selectmen meeting last night after some, I want to say, interesting discussions back and forth. I was able to speak on behalf of the schools and give the Whitman Selectmen and the folks in FinCom an impact of what it would mean for a 6%, or 6.5% assessment to our budget as far as staff. But before I go into that impact on that, one of the challenges that I presented to, at the department head meeting and then at Whitman Selectmen last night, and something I didn't present to the Hanson FinCom, was the assessment or the increase in the overall budget for South Shore Vo-Tech. They asked for a 3.1% increase to their overall budget, which was approved by both towns. If we were to get a 3.1% increase to our budget, that would be an 8.5 assessment to both towns. I'm just asking both towns to treat us as equals. There is a difference in per pupil expenditures from both towns, or for both schools. Currently, right now, for Whitman-Hanson, we are spending, where's my number? $12,740.36 per pupil. South Shore Vo-Tech is spending $21,142 per pupil. If we include our special education, our per pupil expenditure goes up to $13,385.66. South Shore Vo-Tech does not have any out-of-district placements. That's the difference. They received a 3.1% increase in their budget. We did not, or we do not at this point. We have a 6.5 on the table. At a 6.5% assessment, that would increase our budget 1.7%. So there is a differential between both South Shore Vo-Tech and us. That's the only school I'm wishing to compare us with because we are sending students over there. I'm not including Norfolk Aggie, a small amount of our students go there. But for this committee, I don't see an apples-and-apples type of situation, I see an apples-and-oranges type of situation. And I think South Shore Vo-Tech is a very good institution for our students to attend if that's their choice. I just want equal footing as far as finances for the teachers that I employ, or that we employ as a district, and for the students that decide to stay here. You know my concerns about students leaving for charter schools if I lose staff? You know my concerns about students leaving for choice if I lose staff? And you know my concerns about students coming here for school choice if we lose staff? As I shared with the Whitman Selectmen last night, I'll share this publicly with us today, at a 6.5 assessment from both towns without any use of E and D, I'm looking at three non-union employee staff from the district being cut. I'm looking at a guidance cut. I'm looking at elimination of foreign language at the middle level. I'm looking at three elementary duty aides. I'm looking at three paraprofessionals district-wide, and 19 classroom teachers. I'm also looking at our part-time elementary music person that we employ part-time. That's without any use of E and D. The teachers are classroom teachers that are K to 12. We're looking at, if we remain at 6.5%, a ping slip for all non-professional status employees within the next two days. I know members of this committee went on a tour yesterday, and I appreciate that because I think you were able to see what happens in our classrooms. Great things happen for all kids. You saw students who had high abilities, you had students that struggled, and you saw teachers that care. You saw teachers working hard, you saw smiley faces, you saw culture that showed that there's acceptance all the way around the district. And I appreciate you being able to see that so you can relay that to our taxpayers. They're getting a Cadillac for a Ugo right now. It's the best bang, or best bang for your buck in town, and I believe at the Selectmen's meeting that was brought up. Somebody on the FinCom yesterday mentioned that we are in the bottom in per pupil expenditures in the area. I would hope that we could get further along. I don't know if we're seventh from the bottom, I don't know if we're tenth from the bottom, I just keep hearing bottom, and I'm being tired of being on the bottom. I think, again, our teachers do yeoman's work for not a lot. This 6% increase, even though there will be layoffs, maintains a curriculum that we're committed to give our teachers. It also retains social-emotional learning and supports for our students. And as you all know, our social-emotional support system in place in our state, in our country, and in our schools is broken, and we need to support students better. So we're maintaining that even though at 6.5, we might have some layoffs. It's a leadership decision that we need to do for our students. I'm just asking the committee to make a fair and equitable decision for our students, equitable to that of South Shore Vo-Tech. equitable to that of South Shore Vo-Tech.
Okay. I think it needs to be discussed again. I'm going to explain how we start out making an assessment. There's a lot of confusion, and there is every year, and there has been for many, many years, so no one's getting a blame here. When the superintendent comes to the school committee, they come and they tell us what they need to do a budget. In the difficult years, which has been the last several, the superintendent has presented a level service budget. Well, this year's budget to be level service, without adding anything, came in at 15.1% assessment to the towns. This is not a 15.1% increase in the budget. If you look at the budget at $53 million, roughly depending on which ones are granted, and you took a 15.1% hike, it would be much more than what the assessment is. So lots of times, people get the assessment confused with it being a 15.1% total overall budget increase. It is not. It's a 15.1% assessment to the towns. And when that assessment goes out, that's what the superintendent's job is. He's here to tell you he would be reckless if he didn't tell us what we need to run the school district. So he comes and he tells us that. And the school committee starts with what he tells us, and this committee decided, at 15.1. Now, that's when the motion starts on where we're going to end up. There are a lot of moving parts with it. There's E and D, and people say, what is E and D? It's excess and deficiency. Well, in the years past, we weren't on a MUNA system, so we were budgeting off of what previous years were, and it goes up and down. So lots of times, a number might get over-budgeted, and then if we don't spend that much money, it goes into excess and deficiency. E and D is also used for any cost during the year that might come up because we can only come to the towns once a year to look for a budget. So if we have a school that had a problem, we have the money to go ahead and fix it, and then sometimes we come back to the towns for the capital to replace it in E and D. But that's how the money gets replaced. With the MUNA system, it's gotten to be a much tighter budgeting, so it's getting more and more difficult to replace money in E and D. The state law says you can have 5% of your budget in E and D, and that's the good figure. We haven't been at 5% for years, and every year, we hit E and D to backfill what's going on in the assessment. This is the decision the committee has to make this evening because we are at 15.1%. The towns are at 6.5% to the schools. Now, there has been, I'll get into that in a few minutes, there's been some movement on that. But that's what it is. Does anyone have any questions about how these assessments are calculated? Because it does get confusing, and we, every one of the members that's sitting right here has been, somebody's come up and said, explain that to me. It's how it works, it's been going that way for many years, but again, the superintendent's job, and our job, after he tells us, is to tell you what it costs to run this district. The town's job is to tell us how they're going to fund it. And that discussion has been going on for weeks and weeks and weeks for anybody that's been watching it. And it's, at times, it's been difficult. It's always a difficult time of the year for everyone involved, including the school committee. We go to lots of meetings, and we try to meter it out, because obviously, the 10 people that are sitting in front of you are all interested in education for students, in providing the best education that they can in keeping employees. You heard the superintendent tell you what 6.50 is going to do as far as job loss or pink slips, as we say, and by the end of the night, we'll know that. Tomorrow, they will be going out. We have, up until town meeting in previous history, I have to mention this, has shown us we have adjusted a number on town meeting the night of. I don't want us to be in that position, but sometimes, that does become what happens. We'd like to get it settled, we'd like to come to a figure, we want to make it work for everybody. So I'll open it up. If anyone has any questions?
I go with them.
I'm going to start with Chris.
So I want to ask you a quick question. I'll have a comment in a little bit, but quick question. So, to Jeff, before we start hashing out numbers, 15.1 was what you came to us for level services. Based upon all the analysis and any type of review you've done up to this point, what is that number? Because I don't think it's that far from 15.1, but I want the record to reflect what is that number today. Not what are the towns giving you, what is your number for level services?
Let me get back to you, just move some things around. I wasn't expecting that question.
Yeah.
For a number.
Okay, Bob, then Fred, I mean, then Mr. Boyce and then Bob.
I guess my statement may coincide with what you have to say, but I think I would like to at least open for discussion. I know 15.1 is probably out of reach, obviously, but for discussion purposes, I'd like to start at 10%.
I couldn't hear, Bob.
For purpose of discussion, I would like to look at 10% assessment.
You're making a motion to a...
Not necessarily a motion at this point, but a discussion on 10%. If you would like me to make a motion later on, I would do that, but...
Okay.
I'd also like to see what...
Yeah.
So I have that. It is here. I just wasn't expecting any questions.
Sorry.
So our total budget, what we're looking for as a total budget, is $53,270,534. That's after we cut to $290 at that last meeting. So $53,270,534. That's 15.1.
So it's still 15.1 is, that's what I'm trying to flesh out.
Correct.
Before, I hear you, what you're communicating from the various town meetings.
Yes.
But that's what the towns are saying they can afford. That's a big difference from the administration saying...
Correct.
That's what we need.
That keeps everything intact that we presented to you minus the $290 that we took away from a leadership standpoint, from legal, from supplies, from everything that doesn't live and breathe. Then we get into living and breathing and other things.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boyce.
Just want to ask the superintendent, you mentioned last night, or maybe it wasn't part of last night, but in your analysis, that 8.5 or 8.3 number for equity going along with Vo-Tech, was that brought up at the meeting last night? Obviously, that wasn't focus of last night's meeting.
It was brought up to the town administrator and to Selectmen on Monday.
Okay.
At a department meeting with the department heads, and it was brought up at the Selectmen's meeting last night.
It was, and what was their kind of discussion outcome about that? Was, I mean, they can say, yeah, we want to be equitable. Is anyone firm on...
I wasn't part of the discussion.
Okay.
I presented. I don't know if Mr. Small wants to comment. I don't believe there was any discussion around that 8.5.
There wasn't, you know, the towns, I believe, the way they're formulating their 6.5 is based upon what they can give in jockeying different lines and different things.
And my argument to that was, I just wanted to provide that there's parity, there should be parity amongst all children in Whitman and Hanson, and not, a little more because there are less kids, so it's less cost. That was my point.
Right.
And I just wanted it for the record last night.
That's a good way to say it. Thank you.
One second, Fred. Christine, how much is in E and D? $961,237?
Correct.
Thank you. Fred?
Jeff.
Yes.
Within the 15.1 budget, I know we have, I think it's $5,000, school committee that's dedicated toward us. I believe it provides waters and our conference down the Cape, et cetera. I know myself, if I want to go down the Cape to the conference, I'll pay for my own badge. I think at this point in time, and with this type of budget, you know, if we can eliminate, you know, it's pennies, but it's something and someplace to start.
It's one of the...
You know, if we took away that $5,000 of a major portion and just kept perhaps our memberships open, you know, between Mars and M-A-S-S, that might be, you know, a little bit of savings there. As far as overnight travel or, you know, paying for hotel rooms, I know I've never submitted my slip, you know, that if you do want to go down the Cape, you go down, you come back, you know, type of thing. And if we maybe establish a no-travel policy, you know, we look at some of the little things that we can do to start chipping in, you know, toward making a little bit of a difference as well.
That's $56,101.
Ian?
No, that's line item $56,10 for travel. $5,000, just take it out of there if everybody wants to put that through.
Who can do that? $5,000 left.
Got a motion?
That's your line item, so I really can't touch that.
Okay. I think it's, an important fact, I have spoken to Mike McHugh and Todd from Hanson, and Hanson is prepared to go to 7.5% in their part of the assessment. I just spoke to them yesterday. So that gives you a little bit more input. We have $961,237 in E and D. We are also over approximately, Christine?
$618.
$650,000 in special ed?
That's correct.
Yes?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Now, can you explain, can you come up and explain to the circuit breaker part of it so everybody is clear on it? Because, and how we end up $650,000 over what we budgeted?
Because we had a couple of out-of-district placements, so that makes the tuition goes up. Also, that would also increase the transportation because if they're going out of districts, so we're paying the tuition as well as transportation, and then the contracted services as well is up for different needs, the needs of the children that are in the district, whether it's OT, PT, evaluations. So all lines are up, and her legal, the legal account is up as well with anticipation of the different, are they called hearings, Jeff?
Yes. So if you want to look, I gave you a handout showing a little pie chart of your increases over the past couple of years that are unanticipated. And you've seen from '17 to '18, to '18 to '19, to '19 to '20, which is our estimate for next year, sped costs are up tremendously in tuitions. Transportation fluctuates, but it's up, something we couldn't anticipate last year, and contracted services fluctuate. I have a firm belief, if we establish some of the programs that, you've seen some programs yesterday, I think you saw most of our sub-separate programs in the fact that we're going to establish new programs next year within this, even within the 6.5, to help bring some of these children back. But those are unanticipated costs, which puts us in a spot. We could be in a better spot. We could be overestimating on tuitions for next year. That's my hope, and that would help us out, or it could go more. You know, I'm hoping the trend because we now have some stability upstairs in our special education department, and some solid folks looking at some long-term aspects of keeping kids in district. I hope that that solidifies it, but it's a wild card. And as I presented that, again, at the department meeting and at the Selectmen's meeting, if a student moves in or moves out, that can impact us tremendously. One student.
Just so the people in the gallery or the people that are watching that don't have this chart, in the 2016, 2017 year, it was $2,500,000. In 2019, 2020, it's $4 million.
For out-of-district placements.
And I think for the people, Jeff, that maybe not here, or some of the people in the gallery, can you explain what out-of-district placements?
Sure.
And residential?
Sure.
And when we keep a certain group inside?
Sure.
How it impacts the costs?
So there's all levels of special education, from inclusion special education, where students are in a classroom with a general education teacher, and they're servicing that student with a general IEP. An IEP is an individualized education plan that's written for each individual student, and teachers are liable, personally and professionally liable, to make sure that what's written on that IEP is given to that student, or that student's services are received. Let me back up and talk about the IEP process for everyone. It's a team process. It's not the school dictating what goes to a student. It's not a parent dictating to the school what they need for their child. The team consists of a teacher, a general education teacher, a parent, potentially a student advocate for that student, a building administrator, and a special educator. Teams can grow and they can shrink. There also may be, if it's contentious, an attorney for both sides. That's the team process. So an IEP can go from needing extra time on an examination to an out-of-district placement residential, which means a student might actually live and reside somewhere away from home where they're receiving education services and services out to maintain their general well-being. There is a process. And there's usually three levels once we get out of district. We're members of the North River Collaborative, you just signed off on that agreement. Various collaboratives, where students will be transported from their home to receive education outside of what we can provide in our school. What we've seen recently is our collaboratives aren't able to fulfill the IEPs of some of our students at this point. What we're seeing now is trending more private institutions whose costs are more than our collaboratives being able to service those students. And at worst, and I don't know worst for us financially, but for the betterment of that student, we're seeing some students being placed in residential because their living environment at home, parents can't take care of that child, and the educational facility is giving that child the best experience. What we've seen in the past, over the last 10 or 15 years, the state has cut back on facilities, state-run facilities, that some of these students might have been able to be able to reside in or receive their services. Now it's coming back to our taxpayers and our towns, and that's why, as a Superintendent's Association, we've hit with our legislators to say, we need some relief, not only from the circuit breaker aspect of reimbursement, but the transportation aspect of reimbursement, because Mr. Hayes hit on the tuitions, but our transportation, which is zero reimbursed from the state, is exceeding what we can afford as well. So that's special education in a five-minute or three-minute nutshell, but what we need to do is provide a service for each individual child who qualifies for an IEP, and it's not, there's a specific process for that. It's not just, hey, my student doesn't do well in reading, so I want him to have extra help, or if I want him to have a one-to-one paraprofessional, or if I want him in a sub-separate classroom. That's not the process. It's an extenuating process with testing and assessments. So sometimes folks say, you know, you just give these IEPs away, or any parent gets what they want. That's not necessarily true, and that's why our legal costs are up, because we're consulting attorneys to make sure we're making the best choices for us financially as a district and for the child. I think the challenge for some of our special educators, our principals, and our director of special education, is to sometimes, and parents feel like this is a fight, us and them, but they are bound to make sure that we service the child, but also look at our financial plan or the finances of this, and make sure we put the child in the appropriate setting for that student. Not dependent on finances, but for that student. And again, George just highlighted, we have to make sure that they're in the least restrictive environment, so we always start at the school level before we just jump to an out-of-district placement.
Would you say, Jeff, that IEPs are up 20%, 15%? I know it's hard to hit an exact number.
I was at, and I think we were at a conference with one of our attorneys, Jenny Tate, if you guys remember Jenny from a couple of years back.
Yes.
She said within, and this was five years ago, IEPs and 504s would be up 50%, and that's pretty much where we're going. And it's not because of the need. There is a definite need. It's not just because of fluff, or every parent wants their child to have something or an accommodation. There's a definite need. Students are learning differently. Students are emotionally challenged differently, and if you're starting to look at different research, and there's all kinds of stuff coming out, kick your kid outside, get them away from their screens, all these types of things that we're starting to catch up on, but we're still servicing our students here in the classrooms on a day-to-day basis. And we're seeing more and more students not being able to cope because of anxiety, because of stress, and that's starting in kindergarten and preschool now, not just at the high school level at IEPs. You're seeing it across the board, and students really feel this anxiety or the stress, or have some specific learning disabilities. So that's where we're at. And I would say, yeah, 20, 25%, maybe even 30%, we're up as far as we're writing IEPs in the district.
Before I get to Bob, I want to talk a little bit about the unfunded mandates. I know we keep hitting on that. I know we keep hitting on that, but that is a definite subject, one hundred and fifty percent true in how it works and how we end up in these situations.
So we're, as I presented in our first budget, we're not reimbursed for over five million dollars in underfunded and unfunded mandates. Special education is one of them. Teacher evaluation is one of them. McKinvento is one of them. There's a laundry list, and as I presented to you, that's hurting us tremendously. We are on the backs of our legislators, asking for more assistance, but there's a process to that as well. I know the governor's budget, or the governor's looking at some proposals right now to give us some relief, but that relief isn't here yet. But we are being crippled by underfunded and unfunded mandates. That's not only us, it's the town of Pembroke, the town of Plymouth, the town of East Bridgewater. They've all come forth to their school committees and have said their budgets have increased legitimately, significantly because of underfunded and unfunded mandates. And I'm primarily looking at special education because that's the biggest bubble that we have right now.
Is everybody clear what mandates are? The state makes laws and says we have to follow in layman's terms. But they don't tell us how they're going to fund it. So ultimately, when you come up with five million dollars worth of unfunded mandates, it goes back to the taxpayer in the town, depending on what goes on in the school district. Questions, anyone? Any committee?
Well, they do tell you how they're going to fund it, they just don't fund it.
Yeah, they don't fund it, I understand that. Chris, let Fred.
On the topic of special education, right, if I'm looking at your numbers here, it's roughly a million dollars increase over the last year. Right, so I think the issue with that, just for folks to take away, is that's not equitable. So if we're talking about a million and a half, or two, or two and a half million dollars coming in as new money, and you're spending a million in special education, it's not equitable. Because when you look at the costs for everything else, you're cutting services.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So for us, this is where it puts us in a really tough spot. I believe in the special education system in the United States. I think it's what separates us from other nations. You've got to do it. You've got to take care of all children. So I'm not advocating against it at all. I strongly believe it's super important. But at the same time, if you're taking half of your, a half, a million dollars annually, it's massive. It puts us in an impossible position to try and do what's right for every other student. So I think that's, when we start talking about some of the other departments in town, they don't, this is where we're apples to oranges. They don't have the unfunded mandates, they don't have the special education constraints that we have to deal with, so.
And one of the arguments that I proposed, or I said to Mr. Salvucci the other day, and it's true, in the three point one percent increase to South Shore Voc Tech, that includes their capital. And my argument is that doesn't include special ed.
Right.
So apples and oranges again. And I'm not trying to blow South Shore Voc Tech away, I understand there. But I just want, again, equity and our special ed is on top of. So our sped budget is seven or eight million dollars off the top of my head, but that's an increase of a million. And that's where, when I come back and say, our overall increase upfront was fifty-three something, take a million off of that, and we're in the ballpark of not really having conversations. We're, okay, we're up a couple of percentage points and we're having difficult conversations, but I have to include that million. And that's what I've had those conversations with different folks in both towns. And I know sometimes I get, folks get glassy-eyed, but the true unfunded, and I think Mr. Cullody said this upstairs, where he compared if every fire department had to transport people for free to the hospital, back and forth, with no revenue, that's what we're doing for some of our students. And I think that's a good analogy to have because we're providing a service with, out of our budget that we can't recoup at this point.
Fred?
And just to clarify on the unfunded and underfunded mandates, something I recently learned and would like to make sure that I share. Any mandate that came before the Ed Reform Act of ninety-three or Proposition Two and a Half is grandfathered. So the state's not required to fulfill that mandate. So, you know, special education was part of the Ed Reform of ninety-three. And any, on regional transportation, we argue back and forth about getting a hundred percent reimbursement. And it's been typically in the sixties, last year I believe it was in the low seventies? Seventy-two, seventy-five?
Seventy-one, two percent.
Seventy-two, yeah.
Seventy-two. You know, full funding, while there are petitions from our legislators that they've signed on to get us that money, it's just not happening and it's not required to happen, unfortunately. It's very, very disappointing. I just want to share that.
Bob?
That's only, that's only seventy-two percent of what qualifies what is reimbursable.
Yeah.
So based on last year, we had just under one point three million dollars that was reimbursable, and we're getting seventy-two percent of that.
Yeah.
Which is about just under a million dollars. And right now, our current circuit breaker balance is eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars with the anticipation of getting one more payment of two hundred and forty-five thousand. So that brings it to just over one point one million. But we've already committed this year FY nineteen, out of that, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. So at the end of the year, anticipate having, you know, just under four hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker.
Yeah, and I think best-case scenario from what they're talking about up in the Hill is seventy-five percent on circuit breaker.
Mm-hmm.
House Ways and Means budget came out today. There's a slight increase in regional transportation in their budget of about five percent maybe.
Yeah, about seventy thousand.
We'll take it.
Yeah.
Right.
We're hoping it gets better.
Yeah, we hope Senate does a better job and we're watching the amendments right now, so.
For a pupil.
Bob?
The reason that I suggested to begin the discussion at ten percent, which I think are four critical areas, and Jeff spoke about, and said he jarred them down before he did, is number one, the importance of class size. You know, if you had twenty-five students, particularly in elementary school, that's, in my opinion, that's kind of max. Anything beyond that becomes problematic. I think you also have to take a look at the number of students who may be on IEP slash sped students. And if you eliminate a good number of paraprofessionals, then I think that increases some problems you may have on the individual learning part in a regular classroom. Most classrooms today probably have a paraprofessional in there because of the makeup of the class. So my concern is if you start eliminating or riffing the paraprofessionals, then it's definitely going to hurt class size when we start talking about the possibility of riffing non-professional status teachers. And I think that's a huge impact, and I don't think, as a committee, we can allow that to happen. So I'd be interested what my other members think of the ten percent based on this critical issue.
Mr. Boyce?
I can totally support Mr. Trotter, but I'm very concerned with just marginal numbers like Mr. Small was reporting from the House Ways and Means. And we don't have a lot more knowledge about what's coming from the Commonwealth, if anything. I'm almost destined to stay at our fifteen point one percent number. I've heard a lot tonight, but I haven't heard enough to substantiate that we're moving away from that. And I'm happy to play ball and I'm happy to be in agreement. But I think we still need a little bit more. And it might call for another meeting of this committee this month. Obviously, school vacation next week and everyone should enjoy themselves, but, you know, there's still work to do here.
Mr. Boyce, I can guarantee you, we're going to have a couple of meetings in the next few weeks.
Awesome, good.
So you don't have to advocate for that.
All right, thanks.
You're on.
Put it on my calendar.
Anyone else before I open it up to the gallery? I would remind everyone, please stay on the assessment discussion that we're having.
Just one quick thing.
Go ahead, Dan.
School choice, it's never brought up, as it should be, I pointed it out to Jeff, I think, last week. School choice, we get that, we get kids coming in because we have a good school system. We take this hit. You're going to see a decline in school choice. We're going to drop things. When that drops, the money goes away and we lose up to seven teachers here at the high school, just for that reason alone. That's another thing people don't realize out there. I mean, I'm not too thrilled with school choice, but it's a moneymaker for us. So it doesn't hurt our children to put them in those classrooms where we have seats. If we're going backwards, that's another thing we have to look at. We're going to be losing more than just what's here because we run off of school choice, we run off of grants, which is ridiculous, you know, it's...
Well, when you heard Christine give you a budget update, she said some of the numbers were off because of no pre-K.
That's kind of...
No kindergarten all day. Once students go somewhere else, we usually lose them for the remainder. And that costs you also. So that's, that's another subject for another day, but... Does anyone here have anything to add before I open it to the floor? Good, everybody? Anyone have any questions or discussions, Mr. Cath?
Sean King, thirty-one Forest Street. There's a lot I could say, but I think fundamentally, the thing that I keep going back to is probably this. If you feel like the town has been really with us over the last year, hand in hand, kind of reasoning this out and being supportive, then I would approach this number one way. But you feel like your relationship with the towns have been kind of adversarial, and that they haven't been very supportive, and that you're not very happy with the communication and that kind of thing. And I think you need to approach this number from that direction. And I do think that that is kind of the fundamental question. This is a negotiation, and people are negotiating with you. They're negotiating strongly, and this is my opinion. I think they're negotiating strongly. They're taking strong action to look out for their departments, which is understandable. It's what they're supposed to do. If people have taken strong action for their departments and you're taking a mild action because you believe that this is a... That they've been really supportive over the last year, then I think you're going to get a pretty harsh result. I think, I think if you meet... You keep going with this negotiation with a strong mind, with the determination and the compassion that you started with, and you really hold strong with your principles, I think you'll have a different result. You have good reasons to argue, you have good people to argue for, you have children that are depending on you. And this isn't going to be easy, there's no easy solution. I'm upset about the override. There should be an override on the ballot. And they weren't prepared. I sat on the finance committee for two years and I couldn't, right now I couldn't support an override because we're not prepared, in Whitman. But they should be prepared. They knew about this, they had time to prepare. That's, to me, that is a strong egregious action against what could be very helpful to this community. That robs parents with the right to just vote for it. But didn't, if it got shot down and it was done the right way, then that's a democratic process. But to not be on the ballot is a big deal. And that hurts. That's going to hurt a lot of people. That's going to hurt a lot of professionals. It's a hard decision. I don't envy your seat, but I think you do have a lot riding on your shoulders. And I'd be careful on how you move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
So I'd like to respond to that. So I respect Mr. King, I respect his passion, but I refuse to look at this as a negotiation. I don't care whether the towns have been supportive or not. I think we need to do what we need, what is right for the students of this district. I'm not, I'm not here to play games or negotiate. This is simply what is best for the students of our district, what do they need? I refuse to sacrifice any of their time because folks in this, either town want to play games with each other on what can and can't be done. This is not, we're not buying cars. These are kids, livelihoods, futures at stake, we have to do what's right.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cath?
I echo, obviously, what was just said. I'd like to understand, though, for the process, and I mentioned this before. So there's going to be numbers thrown out, there's going to be back and forth, there's going to be talk of meetings. What is the process in the sense Hanson says a number, Whitman comes out at a different number? Where do you go from there? And then there's talk about a couple of meetings here, super town, this, super town. Can you go through that process, make sure that's clear?
There is a process in place, Kevin. Both towns have to come to an agreement on a number. They can't be one over here and one over there because of the way it's set up. And there are, there are other processes of, you could end up, if one town had one number and one town had another number and we couldn't come to an agreement, you could have a super town meeting here in the district and go that avenue. That almost happened once, but it got straightened out at town meeting, if I remember correctly. So it can go right to the day of town meeting. I would rather not see that happen for the simple reason, and this is just me myself, it leaves such uncertainty with employees in the district. It leaves them in the glitch of, what do I do? Because if you're an employee, one of the reasons there's a law, we have to give out pink slips by a certain date, is so they can apply to other districts. I mean, this is their livelihood, their job, this is what they signed on for. And when the funding isn't there, it has to be fair and equitable to them also. They have rights. And rightfully so, they should have, I mean, you know, that's what they signed on to. So there is a process in place, and hopefully it doesn't get to that. Where, you know, you've heard different opinions here right on the committee this evening. And it's a very difficult decision that everyone here has to make. Because we have the town saying one thing, we have the committee and the superintendent saying another. We have people that are going to be getting pink slips tomorrow. And it's incumbent on this committee to make a decision. It's probably the hardest thing the committee has to do year-round. And the unfortunate part is, and I said this, I think, the other night, one of the, I forget, I've been to so many meetings, I don't remember. It's sad that a school committee should be talking about great things that go on in school and how to increase curriculum and how to increase this program and how to increase that program. And in the last five years, we're all saying, how are we going to survive? Do more with less. And we've been doing that, but eventually, you get to where we are today. Fred?
As much displeasure and difficultness, because I agree with everyone, we should be looking at different things. I think we also have to be cognizant, not what we want from the town of either Whitman or Hanson, but what can they give? And you can look at it at ten different ways as far as blinders on, it's all or nothing for ourselves and for our kids. And to a large point, I agree with that. But at the same time, there are other, there are other folks and other departments and other people. And what can they give us? And were they prepared? No. Should things have gone different? Probably. But if we can, or if we have to, I mean, I'd be all for taking E and D money even to try and supplement different things. And really preparing for the fall and having a proper override presentation showing the need to everyone to reset, and we'll take control of that ourselves. And not rely on perhaps just the towns, but hopefully working in conjunction with them and with their support to have a proper override supported. And have different levels that's not only going to bring us to where we are right now in looking for level services, but going back to that idea of a student success budget and really bring back programs and bring the things that our kids really deserve. And go for it, so to speak. And let the taxpayer and let the voter decide, you know, do they want to have a best-in-class education? And here's what we can do, and this is what the cost will be, and take control of it. And I think that if we hit a reset button, and as horrible as it is, we may be better off in that respect.
Bob?
Well, I guess I'm willing to see if anyone on the committee has anything to say about a ten percent assessment. Is it too early, too late? You want to stay at fifteen, you want to go below ten? I'm kind of interested in what my committee members feel.
First and foremost, Mr. Small touched on it, and I thought maybe he was making a motion, but he kept right on going about E and D. I heard that mentioned. Before we go talking about assessment numbers, I think we should probably, and again, we should probably talk about excess and deficiency and where that's going to put us and where would that, what would that restore and how much we take from E and D. As I said earlier, I asked Christine in this, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars in E and D. There is no safe number, is, because I said a few minutes before that, we're six hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what we budgeted because of the changing processes that went on with special education. So what is a safe number? Typically, in years past, we were at $1.2 million, $1.3 million. We hit it for $500,000 and brought us into the $800,000 area now. And as I said, in those years, Munis wasn't as close. It's a new operating system, and so that's how we're at, $961,000. Everything is tighter. So having said that, Mr. Small?
And also, one thing in discussion with Jeff, on special education, and perhaps you can elaborate, there is a method, if we ran into trouble on our sped budget going sky high over, there is a mechanism through the Department of Education that we could borrow from future circuit breaker money.
I'm going to have Christine speak, because we actually called DESI on the, on the emergency circuit breaker. What we, what we looked at?
Extraordinary relief.
Yeah, extraordinary relief.
Lisa Forbes and I looked at that last fall, based on what we anticipated the cost to be this year. And we didn't qualify, because we have to spend over 125, or 25% more than what we currently are spending. We're close to that right now, but we're still short about $125,000.
But there is a mechanism.
There is a mechanism.
We didn't qualify, we've already looked at that.
Yeah.
You know, because hey, you know, I heard that we might be able to do this, so we, we call up and say, hey, look, where are we? We're about 100 and... It's not free money from the state. At first, that's what I thought it was. Yeah, it was awesome. This is great. We're going to qualify, right? But it's not free money from the state. It's borrowing something that we, we're entitled to. It's like taking a loan out ahead of time, like a, like a, like a, oh.
Pay a loan.
Oh, pay a loan. So there is some relief. There is an opportunity, if next year we get into some real trouble, if you end up taking money out of E and D, that we can't recover from our freeze this year. Because I, I'm still confident that we're, we're going to make our benchmark. Even if we're in a deficit, we should be pretty close to being able to put some money. Although Munis is a great system, and we're more accountable. We froze the budget. We're hoping to recover some money that we'll be able to put in the E and D. If we got into some real trouble next year with, with special education, we could apply to DESI and say, this is our situation. And at worst, put, put that on them to say, you know, and I think I had a conversation with, with a, with a school committee member, and said, what would happen if we didn't? What would they do? Shut us down? I think they would help us out, you know, if we got into some real trouble, based upon our financial, where we've been in the past.
I'd like to make the motion that we take $561,237 from E and D. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to take out $561,237 from excess and deficiency, leaving a balance of $400,000. It's been made and seconded, discussion, Mr. Cullody?
Can't touch that. You, you can't be taking this out constantly every year. And we're going lower and lower, to the point where if we do have a sped thing, it's not meant to pay for the operating budget. No, I don't want to hear that we're going to get money back. It's not there. Right now, we have $961,000. We have $650,000 we're going to have to pay out of that. That makes us drop down to like 400, less than 300, 311, if we have to pay that. You know, we need money in that account for certain things. If we drop down to $400,000 now, taking all this out, that's, that's a bad risk. And also, doesn't our bond drop when we hit a certain level?
Christine?
The mechanism for the $650,000, you had discussed the circuit breaker part of it?
Right. So in years past, what we have done, we've been a year behind with circuit breakers, so we know exactly how much we have to offset the next, the next year's budget for special education costs. Last year, we were over $400,000 in special education costs, so I had to use additional circuit break, beyond what was already committed to pay for, that came out of last year's circuit breaker. So currently, right now, we have just over $880,000. With one more payment in June will bring us over to like 1.1 million. We've committed 700, it was 430,000 to this year. So even if we, so that would leave us about $250,000 that we could use to offset the current deficit of $600,000 in special ed. So we would still be short about $400,000. But the budget is frozen, so there's a good possibility that that would be able to be offset by monies that will not, not be spent on non-essential things that need to be done this year.
As well as the interest money coming back?
Correct. That's what, why I made that point tonight, that that, that is automatically going to go back into E and D, because we can't spend that. It's a revenue offset. And hopefully, maybe Medicaid, we might get a little more. I, I just don't know yet.
Mr. Boyce?
I'm a risk taker. I'm a trailblazer, and you all are. I've, no, we don't like to follow rules and stuff. We like to do things differently. And believe me, I tried that in the federal government first, before I presented on you. No, we didn't get, well, that's not why. Anyway, we need to go for this. We need the interest in the $400,000 monthly as we go through the last of this fiscal year. My point being is, let it begin. Let's start. JFK wouldn't want us doing anything any other way. We worked hard last two years to get over a million dollars from the communities in keeping this going. I think I've already banged this drum and told this story, that I left the FinCom to go on the road for my job, and traveled to all the presidential libraries to upgrade their ticketing system. I come back, ran for office in 2014, and nothing's changed. We're still at $45 million here. And I said, what happened? It was like nothing moved. We're moving now. We've moved last year, we moved the year before. Don't forget about two years ago. And we just got to keep going. So there's a start, $561,237, plus the additional interest monthly. I want that compounded too, in no low rates, the best we can get. But yeah, no, I'm, I'm going for that. We're blazing the trail.
Are you going to Fox for Jeff to meet?
No, 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 no. Listen, that whole Powerball thing doesn't work either. Keep your money in your pocket. Folks deserve that.
Okay, Chris?
So Christine, don't go too far. So six, so year-to-date budget, we're about $680,000 over budget in just special education, right? 630? 630? So 630. So what assurance can you give us next year that we're not going to be in the same position, and that's not going to get worse?
I was going to say, that sounds like a little Powerball thing.
So, exactly. So that would be the answer I'd expect. Thank you.
What goes wrong comes around.
So my concern is, if we're seeing such an anomaly and such a massive increase in one year, what is, what's protecting us in the future from significant anomalies? Especially given what we're seeing in the classrooms, what we're seeing happen, and the trends that we're all seeing. So my concern would be similar to Mr. Cullody's. I'm a little, at this juncture, concerned with what we're doing on the E and D side.
Fred?
That's one of the reasons why I didn't say 900 and some odd thousand. But Jeff, could you elaborate on some of the programs that you're putting in place for next year that are part of this budget to bring things back into district?
So we're just, so there's just one right now, and it, we're keeping up some of our behavioral programs. We have some retirements that we're going to refill, hopefully. That's part of this issue too, depending on how we flesh this budget out. We do have some retirements and some resignations. So as we move forward, are those positions we need to fill? Or are those positions that we're going to lose, based upon the numbers that I have? Well, we're looking at a program at Hanson Middle, a language-based program, that at least we have one student in there that would be going out of district if not, and hopefully, we can keep more and more. So that's starting, based in, in these figures. We will keep moving forward with more special education programs, based upon we are with, with numbers in the future.
Have you had any discussions with other districts that perhaps the program for this one student might fit the mold of some other students?
They don't, they don't offer those in our local areas. So it could be a tuition-based program for us in the future. But assurances, I don't have that yet, because more and more districts are going to look to do things in-house besides tuition kids out. But yeah, that's, that's the goal. And I, I mentioned this at the Whitman-FinCom meeting back in December. Sometimes you have to invest to make money, and that's what I'm looking at doing in our district right now, is investing what we have, so that we can keep kids in district and potentially tuition in students. I think, again, the Cadillac, we do. I, I, I'm on the same page with Mr. Cullody. In fact, I'd like to offer school choice further to increase our enrollment later on, in, at the middle and at the elementary, based upon the numbers that we have, if we don't cut. Because that, we do, we are a desirable district, even though sometimes on paper, it doesn't look like it. But we offer a great program, K to 12, pre-K to 12. And I think what you saw yesterday is just a little snippet of the day-to-day operations for us. So yes, I'd like to bring kids in tuition-based. We used to have that years ago, I believe it was in Whitman. We ended up cutting that out, and we end up losing some money. But assurances that our sped costs are going to be under control next year? I don't have those assurances. I'm confident in our direction. I'm confident in our leadership, but I'm not sure of what can happen on a day-to-day. First.
Chris? As a first-year member, I've made a, you know, a point to, to listen, to learn, and to ask as much as I can. And it's been a process, you know, a lot, a lot to learn. So I hear Sean King, I hear Chris, and I hear Bob, three different valid perspectives. But I guess, you know, I'm remembering Mr. Anderson, the chairman of the Finance Committee, Whitman. He asked a question at the very end of the meeting last night, the Selectmen's meeting. And it had to do with the fact that Mr. Lyman was suggesting going for an override in the fall. And I think there's pretty much a general consensus that we haven't been, provided the information we need to intelligently decide as a community whether or not we want an override. They haven't been as, you know, diligent as, as maybe they should have. So to think about accepting the 6.5 with the idea of going to the fall, Mr. Anderson asked, you know, what makes me think that we're going to have that information in the fall when we've, we haven't had it in, in a whole year? So that's, that's in my mind, when, when I'm, when I'm thinking about, you know, how to vote in the assessments, or how to adjust it, or where, where we're going to come in. I guess I just, I don't, I don't have a lot of faith that even if we do go to the fall, try to get an override passed, that we're going to be, you know, have, have the information we need to, you know, effectively go after an override.
So just a quick comment, I think.
Chris?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
On the, on the override, my concern would be if we need 3 million, and we get a million and a half. So we're short this year, let's say, a million and a half. That's what we've cut. The likelihood that in the fall, we get an override, it's basically just going to put back what we cut. We're not, we're not going to be moving forward, right? We're just replacing what we just cut out, so.
The danger, the danger in all of what we're talking about, everybody's points are well-taken. But the danger in this, it's kind of like what you said, what Dean said. It's like taking the money and buying Powerball tickets. And if we were assured we were going to win, then we would try to do that. But there is also the chance of losing. If you look back in history, there was a time when we were offered, and I think Robbie will remember this, you were on the committee, Fred might have been, I think Bob was, where we, we went in for 4% or 5%, or 6%, we were offered 4, and then we ended up getting 2, because it didn't work. That is also a danger when you're setting an assessment, when you have recommended things. And I'm only bringing this up so everybody knows I'm not telling you how to do this. But there is danger in all of what we're talking about. We're spending a lot of money. We're already over on sped. I first thought Fred had committed about $300,000 on E and D, but, and truthfully, because of conversations we've had. But he's hearing different things this evening. We have right up until the date to do this. I'm not saying it's going to change, but we have to set some sort of an assessment this evening. And I will reiterate again, it's at 15-1. If you go to 10, if you go to 8, if you go to, you can't go back up. You can't change your mind. It's good faith. Once you get to your level, that's where you are. So I hope that gives some of the committee members an idea of what goes on. There's history on both sides of, of this thing with towns. And to rely on an override, I'm not saying, I'm not blaming anyone, I won't go there. But to, we have to set an assessment to move forward tomorrow. We can't gamble on what we're doing in the fall.
Right.
That's kind of what I'm saying, Mr. Boyce.
Then we'll do that. We're, we got on the table the $561,237.
That's the motion in the second?
In the second. Let's move that vote, and then we can get to the vote on proposed 10%.
Okay. I've had a request to move the vote on the motion of the $561,237. This is coming out of E and D and leaving a balance of $400,000. All those in favor of $561,237 coming out of E and D? Opposed? Five?
He carries.
Get it? Okay. So we have just taken $561,000, $561,237.
Motion we set for the district, an assessment to the towns.
Before you do that, Mr. Boyce, can I just interject?
Yep.
What does that bring you back, Jeff, before we get to that?
Yeah. It looks like we just potentially said nine, nine positions.
Nine positions.
You want to?
Christine?
So the $561,237 is, is about 2.56%. So that you, that would bring you back to 12.5% or so.
From 15-1?
Right.
So that would lower, if, just from taking the two, the $561 from E and D, it brings us back to like 12.5? Correct?
Yep, 12.5.
Okay. So right now, we're at 12.5 by taking out the $561. 12.5 would increase Whitman's to $1,658,773, and Hanson's to $1,114,168, at 12.5, excuse me, at 12.5. Does everybody understand that?
Bob, yes, for a repeat. Can you repeat those numbers?
Whitman's would be 100, 1,658,773 would be their assessment. Hanson's would be $1,114,168. Total assessment for Whitman with the increase would be $14,928,958. Total assessment for Hanson would be $10,027,508. This is on population. This is how these schools are funded, in case somebody's wondering how it is. It's a 60/40 split. It goes by student population. So that's why the numbers, if you look at it, that's the split. Nine positions.
Nine.
Caff, what do you say?
That's roughly. We, we calculate positions at about $65,000, give or take where people are at. So that looks roughly 8.6 where we're at, okay?
Eight and a half, you said?
Eight and a half. And you're listening to two history majors right now, doing the numbers quickly.
Depending on salary.
Doing the best we can.
Depending on salaries, Matt, as you know. But most of what he talked about cutting was non-professional status. So that's where we're at currently. That wasn't the motion that Mr. Boyce said when I interrupted him. I'm very sorry for that.
That's okay.
I have a couple of speakers from the gallery, if you'd like to hear from them first. Would you like to speak?
Leela Donovan, 81, Old Mansion Lane.
Leela, can you speak up a little bit more?
Sure.
I'm getting a little hot in here.
All right.
No head, no, you know.
I obviously appreciate the fact that we just saved nine positions, but I want everyone to remember that that still means many positions being cut, and I don't think that's true across other departments in town. I'm not here to consider what other departments can do. I don't, if... I don't, if anybody here is willing to sacrifice because they want to think about the other departments, then you're at the wrong meeting. We're here to fight for the kids. We're not here to be considerate of the others. There's a time and a place for that, but right now is not that time. As I said, I'm happy that we just did something to save those nine, but we need to save more. And I don't want to discuss being considerate of the other departments. I don't want to hope for that override in the fall. I agree with you, Bob. I agree with you, Chris. We can't bank on that. It was discussed before, and people said they'd go for it this year. Well, that's not happening. So, I have no faith in that option, hopefully, in the fall. So, I hope you will fight 100% with all your passion for what the kids need, not other departments in town.
You know, I know you've been very patient. I saw you there, but when I saw you sit down, I'm like, I gotta get her.
Should I, should I not? My heart's pounding. I'm mad, sad, so many motions, but along the lines of Lila, cutting positions, so you talk about cutting a paraprofessional. Paraprofessionals are paid not enough, way, way, way underpaid, and they do so much work. Sometimes it's the mere work of one paraprofessional for, I don't even know, $20,000 a year, maybe, if they get paid well, that keeps a kid in district. So, here we are, looking at cutting these pairs. Let me tell you, the next few years, if we cut these pairs, there will be more kids going out of district at not $20,000 a year. Those are the things that we need to be proactive. If we cut these positions in the future, it's going to be way, way, way more money. I have seen firsthand, paraprofessionals, literally, along with the therapists and the counselors, save children. So, those are things we need to think about. It can be cheaper now.
Thank you. One more? You have something to add?
Hi. My name's Natalie. I'm a senior at the high school currently. This is the first time I've ever been to a meeting. But I just wanted to speak on behalf of all of the teachers in this district. I don't think I would be where I am today without half of the teachers. I was listening to some of the proposed departments and positions. I am a member of the band at the high school. Cutting even one position to that program, just, I, it's just a very, like, emotional thing for me, because a lot of you might know Mr. Don Dero. That man has changed my life, along with all of the teachers that I've had while I've been in this school district. He is someone who has made me grow into who I am today, and even to see one of those positions go, that could be the passion that someone has for an instrument or music, because my, me playing the clarinet, that's someone's knack for lacrosse, or someone who likes to play baseball. I'm just going to compare it to that. To cut that position is someone who could, that is a person who could have an impact, like what Mr. Don Dero had on my life throughout, as I've grown up. I've been playing the clarinet since fifth grade. I've had Mr. Don Dero as a teacher since sixth grade. I have literally grown up next to that man, and to know that you could be cutting a position for someone who could have that same impact on a student as he had on me, it just, it's hard to face. And same with the other proposed, maybe I didn't hear you correctly, but you were talking about a guidance position. That is one of the most important positions that I've experienced as a senior, someone who is helping me go to college and to, and I feel like even the guidance department now, they might, they might not even have the resources to, that they might need to go on in the future, and to picture even cutting that back. I just don't see that as a success for the district and the students in the district if you're talking about their livelihood. I just don't see that as speaking in their livelihood, same with the, just, the teacher, if you look around, like, a lot of these teachers that I see are teachers who have not been here for 10 years, that, like, these are teachers who are young, and they've made an impact. Mr. Cozak, I do the recycling club with him. I, he's my advisor for Science NHS. Like, these are teachers who are having impacts on all of our lives, and to see them go, I just, I can't just sit back and see that happen. And I know it might sound weird, because I'm a senior and I'm leaving, so it doesn't specifically have an impact on me, but there are other kids that I know it will have an impact on. So, I just hope that you take that into consideration, like, when you're making the other decision.
Well said.
Thank you.
Those are the voices we love to hear.
That's a pretty powerful statement.
Absolutely.
From a young lady who is in this district, who just summed up in a short amount of time what we've been working on now for an hour and a half, that we need every single student, every single teacher, every single day. It makes a difference. One more, and then we're going to move to the assessment. Ladies and gentlemen.
28 Forest. So, we've talked about doing the two-and-a-half override in the fall, but if you do that, you still have to give the pink slips.
Tomorrow.
So, that means all of those teachers, they're not going to wait around to the fall to see if maybe they'll get their job back. They're going to go someplace else. And I know some of the people who are on the chopping block, and they're amazing, and you don't want to lose them. You really don't. So, I think it'll be a real problem.
Thank you.
So, obviously, this is heavy on everybody, and I understand this has been a difficult process. I've been to a few of these meetings, and my head, I think, is still spinning. Obviously, we have a lot at stake here for our kids, our staff, in particular, our kids. Since 2000, I believe John McEwen had started, there was a running number, I think we have lost something to the effect of 100-plus positions since 2000, and the impact that it has. And that goes through the language, counseling, adjustment councils, et cetera, for our kids, and obviously the sake, we can't do, we can't go anymore. So, we have to do all that we can to help. So, I just say that.
Thank you, Kevin. One more. Robbie, go ahead.
Just point of clarification with the override. Correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I am. We get one shot at the apple, as you always say, for our budget, so how does that affect us with an override going through in the fall when we can't do budget stuff in the fall? We can do capital things, but we can't do budget, correct?
It would be for next year.
Yeah, we're talking about.
Not this current, yeah. Not the year coming up.
And my vision, just to be clear, and this is my vision and mine only.
Thank you.
Is not to just restore services, but to hopefully get us to a level where we should be, and let the taxpayer decide where they want to be. Because it's the voters that ultimately approve our budgets. So, if we are going to go for an override, we should give the voter the opportunity to fund us to the level where we should be, and that's a whole hell of a lot more than what we're talking about tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Greenie Longtina, Six River Birch Circle, also Selectman Whitman. I'll speak for myself this evening, whilst I cannot speak to the board. Let me choose my words carefully this evening. I'm going to agree with a couple of things, and I'm going to disagree with something. As I said last night, 12 months to the day, probably, three members of the Whitman Board of Selectman made a choice to use an unorthodox funding solution to try to make every department whole, which included, I believe, a 9.5% assessment to the school. It was very clear to me that evening exactly what we were doing, that we were putting ourselves in a shortfall situation, and we would require an override. What I will agree with is it failed. The process failed. We should have been ahead of this. The town of Whitman absolutely should have been going for an override this year, no doubt. Time was wasted. I'm not going to point fingers at anyone. I'll shoulder the burden myself. Maybe I could have been more vocal. But we shouldn't be in this position again. Last night, I made a vote to give the school 6.5%, and I know that didn't go over well. But how I justified that was I secured 6.5%. You would be guaranteed that, and I know that's not enough. But I've dealt with Mr. Simonak, and I've talked to George, and I feel I have been as transparent with them as I possibly could be. Why I made that motion and voted for that last evening, because we are not in the position to go for an override. Tomorrow's the day. There are so many unknowns, and like that was just said right now, you're going to get one shot at this. One, do you put it blindly on? Do you just take the chance? I'm not prepared to do that, and I was not prepared to see the school get 4%. So, for me, I thought I did the right thing, that I was able to secure an extra 2.5%, which is, I don't know, 300, another $325,000. What I will disagree with is the negotiation comment. If you were dealing with the infinite supply of money, no, it's not a negotiation. But the position I'm in, there is a limited source of funds, and we need to try and negotiate those alleys to reach the best possible result. I know we need an override. And it's what position are we in right now? Tomorrow's the last day, we could have put it on the ballot. What do you need? What's your sustainable number? I don't think anyone at this table could give it right now. The town also needs an operational override. If we are going to go for this override, and I will be the first one to admit, we should know these numbers, but we shouldn't be in this position today. I think the process failed. But it's one shot, and it has to be a sustainable number. And, you know, last night, what was told to us is Hanson had committed 6.5, and this just goes to show a flaw in the process. I was never told 7.5. That's probably another $137,000 to Whitman. I don't know if we can make that. We're depleting not only free cash for capital stabilization, and I agree that people may not agree with the cuts and where they're coming from. It is, it's a very, it's a tough situation to be in. How do we fix it? I know the town of Whitman cannot burden, be, take on the whole burden of $5 million of unfunded mandates. To try and do that, at some point, the ship will sink. People will just say that we can't pay anymore. I didn't put an override on because we don't know the number that's sustainable, that we will not be back within the next three or four years. You can't keep asking for override after override. Make it a number. If it's a high one, so be it. And we'll have the backup at that point to prove, to prove we are going to do the best we can with this money. But if we're going override after override after override, the whole situation will fail. They'll eventually stop paying for schools, eventually stop paying for police and fire, and the whole ship sinks at that point. And I will say, I will personally apologize to each and every one of you. I knew the situation we were in, and we shouldn't be in it. It was a failure of my boy. We had 12 months. Shouldn't have been in this position, and I am sorry. And I've said that at a meeting. I was told I was grandstanding, but I mean it. We shouldn't have been here. And now, we're going to take more time, and I will be damned if I just let that time pass. And again, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay, Mr. Boyce, you were in the middle of making a motion on the assessment when I opened it up a little further. I apologize for that, but I think it was all stuff that needed to be heard, and to hear from a senior at the high school. Again, I applaud her for getting up. She's 17 years old, maybe, and gets up in front of a crowd like this and looking at all of us, and made a statement that had huge impact, so. Go ahead, Mr. Boyce.
I motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I motion we set the assessment to the two towns at 12.5%.
Hearing no second. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
Like to make motion that we set the assessment at 6.5%.
I have a motion on the table of 6.5%. Would anyone second that? Hearing no second. Mr. Trotta.
I guess I'm still waiting for a response to the 10%. I threw it out there as a starting point.
Second.
No.
Is that your motion?
Not at the moment. I'm just curious. I just want to remind you, I set that out there for a starting point. I think I discussed the purposes of class size, staffing, paraprofessionals, how the impact of sped slash IEPs. After that, we took $561,000, and it shrunk it down to 12.5%, and that's saved, you said, nine positions?
Mm-hmm.
So, if we went to 10%, does that help in any way?
It does. I mean, we'll be looking at everything we can do. As I mentioned, we do have some retirements and some resignations, so as I flush that out where it is, and other positions that are outside of the teaching areas, we will look at. At 10%, we're still looking at some cuts in the district. I just, I can't itemize where those will be, because I don't have the exact numbers. But what, as I said to this committee weeks ago, we will try to keep to the values of classroom teachers and supports and curriculum and social-emotional learning to the best we can. At 10%, we're still looking at cuts, even with the E and D, but we will try to value classroom teachers as best we can.
Would you like to know the number at 10%?
You mean the dollar?
Each town would be assessed.
I have that in front of me.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm working off the same sheet. Well, the purpose of that is, I would like to get as close to saving as many positions, I mean, I really don't want to see any positions lost, but I don't want to go too low. So, I just wrote 10. I don't know how that.
What I can say is, if we end up at 10, and we, I heard we're going to be meeting frequently in the next couple of weeks, I can have better numbers for you as we adjust and see where some of our retirements and our resignations are, so it's not necessarily losing people, but we might eliminate positions which we have a history in this district of not replacing resignations or retirements. That being said, I'm uncomfortable giving out specifics around some of the areas right now. I know I can say we have nine positions. The lower we, or the higher we go in the assessment, closer to 12.5, the less impacted is on personnel, and I could give you more information at the next meeting, so to speak. I'd be less likely at a 10% to issue pink slips across the district tomorrow, because it's less of an impact. We'll discuss it after the meeting to see where we are, but I'm just being open and honest here, there is already a savings because of E and D, and we'll look at where we are with retirements and resignations, but even at a 10%, you're still looking at some people within the district or positions in the district not being filled next year.
I'll make a motion to set it at 10, then.
Second.
Mr. Colley has made a motion to set the assessment at 10%, and Mr. Boyce has seconded it. Discussion.
Well, my only concern is, I'd like to save as many positions as possible, and I would go with classroom positions first to keep class size reasonable. I think the paraprofessionals are just as important, depending upon what your class structure, what your class makeup is. So, I'm kind of ambivalent in the sense of, at least we're moving up, we're not at 6.5 or 4.5. We're not at 12.5, which would be sort of the golden number, I assume.
That's correct.
So, I'd maybe like to hear from other people before we.
Chris?
So, I think.
Sean, I'll get to it in a minute. I just got to hear the committee first.
Yes, I think, Jeff, hopefully, we're giving you some level of guidance, so I think you've made it clear what the position is.
Right.
From a leadership standpoint. So, I'm hoping that by giving you some. So I'm hoping that by giving you some sort of barometer at the 10, that would allow you, right, to go back and say, all right, so if that's where I had to work, this is what it would look like. And then it's the same math for every 1% there.
That's correct. And as, I mean, we were looking at nothing from E and D because that's where we sit last time. So a significant portion came from E and D. We were looking at all our areas. And again, we'll recalculate on our board. We have a moving whiteboard. We've got a moving target. And to say that the numbers have changed on an hourly basis is an understatement. It's changing. So we're doing the best we can to save positions within the district because, and I think it was well said, we're talking about people's livelihoods here, and we're talking about children. A most valuable asset. But what I don't want to do is misspeak and mislead the board in making a decision tonight. And I'm also just concerned with an assessment, and this is me just being out there, that moving to an override that neither town is open to at this point, and I've heard that from Hanson, that we might set ourselves up for failure. As what Bob had said, I don't want to end up with 2% on the floor and not being prepared for that either.
So I think, just, if I could finish the thought.
Keep going.
So I think, from my perspective, I completely appreciate and understand that, but I also want to make sure we make an informed decision. So I think there's a difference between saying there's a reasonability on behalf of the committee to make sure that we do the right thing and try to do as best we can to make the best of what is not a great situation in either town. But for us to just snap into saying, whether it's 10, or 12, or 9, or 8 right now, I think we really need to understand the impact because of what you just articulated. So I would almost be more in favor of having the superintendent give us some of those scenarios with the understanding that, yes, the message back to the town should be, we want to work with them. But for us to just slam down a number tonight, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure.
We have no opportunity other than to give a number tonight, though.
But I just think we have to be cognizant. We can set an assessment at whatever we want. What can the towns physically afford to pay? That's the ultimate question. And that's what I'm grappling with. And maybe we've let all you folks down in the way that we've done our process in not demanding numbers harder and faster and trying to get more information and letting the process out. This has been a very different budget year than any year that we've gone through. Just, I'm grappling with that aspect.
Before we move forward with the assessment, I'd like to set a school committee date of April 24th for our next meeting. You okay?
No.
It's the week after. The Wednesday after.
Administrative Professional Day?
It's the two weeks from today.
Administrative Professionals Day. Great, great, awesome. We'll be here.
So, Shell, you get a pizza after.
Yeah, bring a flowers.
Everybody okay with that?
I won't be here.
Okay, that'll give it a couple of weeks. Whatever we set for assessment, send in anybody from the committee. I have a motion and a second, 10%. Any, I was gonna hear from Sean.
That's fine. Go ahead.
I'll be quick. Just a note of caution, and I want to emphasize this point. I think the 2% scenario is a real scenario. You could present something, and they could be upset about it, and they're strong-minded right now. They're approaching this as a negotiation, and they are being direct and forceful. Be careful with what you do. Hearing words like ambivalence, seeing like slumped shoulders and things, be careful. We need result. We need people who are principled and who are gonna stand strong. Otherwise, you're gonna get eaten up. And this is just the first year. So I think, I think you do need to slow down and think this through. But then I do think you need to really find your, this is what we're going to do, and this is how we're gonna approach this negotiation. Otherwise, I think that 2% scenario is real, certainly in Whitman, anyway.
Well, it was real one year, Sean, because I happened to be sitting here and watched it happen.
Mr. Chairman? Bob, let's make a comment now. When I use the word ambivalence, I was more concerned about what our staffing would look like. The way I look at town meeting is, that's an open town meeting. Everyone has a vote. If people want strong schools, strong public schools, then they need to attend the open meeting and vote for it. If they're not interested in the schools, then they don't vote for it. I think it's the democratic process in Whitman. If you want to pack the halls and pass that budget, then you have the right and the opportunity to do that. So again, when I was talking about ambivalence, I was talking about, I don't want to lose staff. And I wanted to make sure if 10% was an adequate number to at least have a holding, because I know we can't go up. That was my concern. But again, if people are interested in the strong public schools, then you need to get out and you need to vote. I had a meeting several weeks ago with two eighth graders from the middle school. They asked me about the school budget. And they asked, an eighth grader asked, what can I do? And I said, the best thing you could do is inform your parents to pay attention to school committee meetings, to read the newspapers, and to attend town meetings. Because if you believe in your schools, that's where you need to be.
Mr. Boyce?
So, I appreciate Mr. Kane in his service for two years he did on the Finance Committee. But as a former member, myself, him, do we have any current member of the Whitman Finance Committee here? Because I will tell you right now, who, recognize yourself.
Rosemary.
Rosemary, thank you. I will tell you right now, as the chairman, from 2003 to 2010 of the Whitman Finance Committee, I was at every single one of these goddamn meetings. Not showing up at the last moment, not showing up. Mr. Latina, thank you for being here, but I don't think you were at all of our meetings either this year. If we're gonna start. No, I am. This is a passion. I'm not upset with these people, but I'm upset if you're going to say, well, Mr. Anderson said this, and Mr. Anderson said that. I followed these folks every single meeting. And so it's not in the hands of Mr. Kane to deliver messages around the community that might be impacting on you, sir, because you're the one doing the due diligence. So sorry for getting a little bit passionate there. But if I'm gonna stand up for these folks, whether I was on that FinCom over there, standing up for them, or over here, and that's what's working together. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a question directed to me?
Ah. We're hearing all of this. What's going on? What's, you know, what is, what is?
Well, I gotta be careful, because after last night's meeting, the FinCom, we did have a post-meeting. We continued our meeting back at our spot. But we didn't make any motions or commitments. But if you wanted, if the school committee would give me a little bit of leeway, I'd like to first speak as a private citizen, not someone from the Finance Committee. That meeting last night at the Whitman Board of Selectmen was the most anti-school meeting I have ever, ever attended. I've been in this town just over 10 years. Those board members, born and raised, they have much more time here. I was shocked to hear from one committee, the chairman, who said, we're all one group. Whitman School District is a Department of Whitman. And then to hear, on the other end, when they were talking about reduced assessments to the town of Whitman, to hear from another Board of Selectmen say that it results in no cuts. Our people don't get cut. And I think that's pretty close to a quote. I was shocked by that. Mentality of the Board of Selectmen to consider Whitman School District as something other than a Department of Whitman is an abomination. Now, with that said, going back to me as a Finance Committee member. We have, again, we have made no votes. You there, we placed a placeholder of 4%. We have worked, our approach as the Finance Committee is to present a budget that takes into account that allows for cash to be left over for capital improvements for the town of Whitman, to allow for equitable cuts to most departments, and to allow for sustainability. What was presented at that meeting by the Board of Selectmen, in our view, is completely contrary to the definition of sustainability. And I think that, again, I'll call it the Department Head Article II, the document that was prepared by department heads with no consideration from the Finance Committee. It is not equitable. It allows for every department, except for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, to maintain their personnel. Is that equitable? I, you know, it's, I say no. We at the Finance Committee are trying to find an equitable solution. So with that, you know, before you make your final vote on the assessment, I just want to have you take that into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just?
Okay.
Bob, just before, I was just gonna say, we're doing the math here.
Go ahead.
Difference between 12, 12.5, and 10, we're looking at about $554,000. So it's still positions. We're still talking positions within the district. So just a better idea of where we're at with that gap between 12.5 and 10. It's eight positions or so.
Beth Stafford, I live in Whitman, also work here too as a teacher. Will be giving up my position because I'll be retiring in June. So I'm making room for somebody else, I hope. One question, one of my questions, Bob, is, you just made a statement that we have to set this tonight. But isn't it true that in the past, we've gone down and down, even at town meeting night too, the assessment?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that tonight we have to set a number, vote on it. It can be all the way up until town meeting floor.
I think people weren't.
Down. It can be brought down. If you set the assessment tonight at 10%, you can't go to town meeting or change anything and say, we're going to 11.
That's right.
You could only go less. You can't go more.
I just want people to understand that because.
It's the process, it's the law.
But it sounded like we can't change this number. And I just want people to understand they can. You know, as a former school committee member and a former selectman, it really does concern me about, you know, the people losing their job. You know, as Kevin said, it's now been way over 100 positions that we have lost since I've been doing this. And it is very disconcerting to me that when I look back at what my oldest son had when he went to Whitman Middle School, what was offered to him and what is offered now or won't be offered next year, it's a really sad situation. At the time when he was going to school, the Social Studies Department didn't even have classrooms. There were so many teachers that they actually had an office. There were two, there was industrial arts, there was wood shop and metal shop. There were two home ec teachers, cooking and sewing, two art teachers. There were three languages offered at that time. And now we don't have, you know, half of that, and which is a shame. And like, you know, what our Finance Committee member just said, you know, it isn't equitable. It never has been equitable. And you don't like to pit department against department, but it always seems to happen that way. I am concerned with numbers and what's gonna come back. And I really would be really nervous about if something happened like that, 2%. Then we really lose a lot of people. At 4, we were gonna lose, I think, 48 positions. I can't imagine what 2 would do to us. We wouldn't be able to function. This is difficult enough that, you know, we have some of the best and brightest of our young people. And I understand it's only fair that they get their pink slips. It's not right, but it's fair to them to if they have to go look for another job. It's their livelihood. They have to survive, and they have to be able to do something. We can't wait forever for that to happen. But I think they, it would be nice to know that as, after the Maytown meetings, we might have something more settled for them. That, you know, if they get pink slips this week, that maybe in a couple of weeks, things might be better. I would love to have somebody say that that's a possibility, if somebody could say that to me. I know it's not indefinite, but I know, I know, but I know when you're working your magic with the retirements and everything else, that we could maybe have a little bit better idea. But I know one of the problems that we have here in a school district is the bumping that we have. If we, because people can move around. People have multiple certifications. And I think everybody needs to understand that. It makes it more difficult for people to understand where are they? They can see, oh, there's five people under me. But there might be somebody who has the same certification who can bump them out. So, you know, it's very confusing for the people who are working for you in this, you know, in this time. And I just want everybody to be aware of that. And I think you all are. But, you know, just to give them some general idea of maybe we can have a little more answers in a couple of weeks after the town meetings would be nice to hear, too.
Thank you, Beth. One more, and then we'll go to Fred.
Just to address Beth for the hopefulness of good news, House Ways and Means did come out today. They are up $10 per pupil. So that's about $37,000. They're up at 30. I know there will be amendments to bring that up higher. Generally, the Senate's a little bit more generous, you know, and then it goes to committee. We won't know anything till probably June, July. But there is perhaps, hopefully, a little bit of a light that there could be some funds recovered. I hear you.
Okay. Jen Roback on Bedford Street in Whitman. I am one of the parents of the special ed population that's costing a lot of money. But I would also like to sit here and say that the staff in Whitman have made it possible for my son, who has Down Syndrome, to be fully included within the public education. And that alone is more than what anything anyone can say or do. And if you cut paraprofessionals, they're the heart of the programs. And as much as teachers are the heart of the program, I'm a teacher myself, it just, it is detrimental to the special ed population. It's detrimental to the population of children that are suffering with social emotional needs. I sat today in a trauma training with over 100 adults, trying to figure out ways to help teach kids with trauma. And the only way to do that is to provide one-to-one support and staff. And the more you cut, the more those children are gonna be hurting, the more they're gonna end up in an outside placement, possibly residential, because they're going to hurt themselves. We've had suicide within this district, within a middle school setting. It's appalling. My daughter is in the Conley Elementary School, and her teacher right now is currently one of the teachers probably that would get pink slip, because I'm pretty sure she's on the newer side. She has changed, my daughter, this year. My daughter has become a phenomenal student. She's risen to the top. Her papers are coming home successful. She is coming home with almost 100 on every test that she has, and it's because that teacher has taken the time to pull her aside and help work with her. Without these teachers, without the paraprofessionals, my family wouldn't be where we are today. And I just ask you, if with that money from the D and E, or whatever you called it, brought it up to 12%, don't go lower than 12%. Because you can't go back up, you said. Even if it's something you want, start at 12. If you can go lower, you can't go higher. And maybe I'm misunderstanding what's been said, but don't go lower tonight. Just don't go lower.
Chris George, ForShelly Lane, Whitman. Apologize for the attire. I came here straight from a field. I feel like we've been here for the past number of years now, talking about the same thing. I guess I'll say a couple of things, regardless of whether we go for an override this year or next year. Jeff, I heard you talking about cutting a language program. That is already one of the 30, it's the second worst language program of the 31 surrounding towns. I know that because we took the time to email every single middle school principal and find out what they offered. If people cared about that program, if the taxpayers cared about that program,
If people cared about that program, if the taxpayers cared about that program, we wouldn't be talking about this right now, we'd be ready to pass an override. They don't care about education. You need to find a budget that incentivizes them to get out and vote. I would suggest that you do not look at any educational cuts before anything that happens in this building after 2:00, 2:30, whatever it is, whether it be sports, whether it be arts, whether it be eliminating an entire JV program, is put on the chopping block. Give that to the voters. I can tell you from experience, I'm dressed like this because I came from a baseball field. People talk about sports in this town. They don't talk about education. It's like banging my head against a wall. I would encourage all of you to make decisions, not only about what's best for the student, because, hey, a well-rounded student athlete, a well-rounded student with arts, that's really important. But to get that, you need to make decisions around what are people gonna vote for, what are gonna bring them to the polls, what are gonna cause them to come out and wanna spend that money. The last time we had an override, a student success budget, there were a number of people, and you can see the voting rolls, there were high school parents who didn't come out because they were not incentivized to come out and vote, whether that be at the town level, so that includes police, that includes fire. Every single one of those departments needs to be included in those overrides, not just the school department. But I would encourage you not to go backwards. My student just still does not have a true librarian. They still do not have a tech teacher at the elementary schools. How many years ago was that? We haven't gotten that back. If you let that go this year, someone said it, it's gonna be really hard to get anything extra back in the override next year. I would encourage you to start at 12%. I wouldn't worry, personally wouldn't worry about the 2%. If the people who are here and the people who have students in this district show up to town meeting, and the towns can afford 4% or 6.5% under the levy limit, then it's our job as responsible citizens to ensure that that money goes to the school system, and there is no repercussions to asking for more. That's our job, and I encourage everybody who's here, I encourage everybody who's walking, watching, to bring someone to that meeting. I encourage people to show up, whether they have a baseball game, whether they have a soccer game. Listen, I coach, I have those things. I find a way to make it to town meeting every single year. I encourage everybody else to do that, but we shouldn't be afraid that somebody from a Board of Selectmen is gonna make a motion to knock us back to 2%. That's ridiculous. We should be responsibly asking for what we need, and whether that's, "We need 12?" And hey, yeah, we get it, we're gonna get 6.5 and the levy, but we want, we want an override, and we want it this year, then we should be going for that, but we shouldn't be doing it because, we should not be doing it because we're afraid we're gonna go back to 2. And I challenge everybody here, and I challenge everybody watching to make sure that they show up, make sure that doesn't happen. And you guys should know that we have your back and that that won't happen.
Well, okay, we've heard quite a few, from quite a few people tonight, and there's been quite a bit of passion in the room, whether it was parents, or students, or teachers, or leaders.
Or me.
I have a motion on the floor, made by Mr. Boyce for 10%, and it was seconded by...
No, I didn't make it. Mr. Colletti made the motion.
I'm sorry, Dan, I'm sorry, Dan made it. Who's second?
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce?
I seconded it.
I knew you were around somewhere.
He volunteered.
Okay, so the motion is, yes, Mr. Boyce?
Can I ask if Mr. Colletti would withdraw that motion, so we can revisit 12 or 12.5%?
I can withdraw the 10%.
I can withdraw my second. Motion for 12.5% assessment.
Looking for a second. Chris, go ahead. It's a little unorthodox.
I apologize.
Not you, I'm talking about me. Go ahead.
It doesn't matter.
Hearing the stories from you all tonight, it's making a difference, making a difference to me, and I think it's gonna make a difference to this board, and I think ultimately, if we continue to speak, be very vocal, and mobilize citizens, we can make the bigger difference. But it comes down to those personalized stories, I think, more than numbers, or even, not that I, you know, when you say positions, it's kind of a generic term. You all understand what that means, and I think I understand what that means, but I think, I'm not sure everyone considers the ramifications, but it's the personalized stories that makes, that makes a difference. And I hope we can maintain the momentum we have in this room, and take it out to the community, and not let it peter. So thank you all. Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Boyce for 12.5%. Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Chris seconded. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Trotter?
I'd just like to say that for the last couple of months, Michelle posted these little things on behind our nameplates, and it says, "The Whitman Regional School District is committed to pro, excuse me, committed to providing each student with a high-quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship." And I think that's our duty and responsibility. Like I said, I threw out the 10% to promote discussion. I'm not committed to 10%, I'll go to 12%, whatever the, 12, excuse me, 12.5, whatever Mr. Howell would decide.
So I would still, I know this is, we'll just keep it unconventional, so even with, potentially, if this is the direction the committee goes, I would still like, if the committee would support it, Mr. Simon Act, to look at what 10% looks like. I think we need to, we need to be informed, and what some of those other levels look like as well.
I agree.
So, again, I think it's, we're all trying to do the right thing as best we can.
Absolutely understood.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion, Fred? I have a motion on the floor that's been seconded for 12.5%. All those in favor? Opposed? And there are no abstentions? I believe it was, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven, one. Is that correct, Michelle? So we have to vote, I have to fill in the numbers, so, because we really technically have to read it. Am I correcting that, Michelle? So give me a second, we can move to statement of interest. Christine, you wanna fill, fill this in, and I'll keep moving. Put Whitman's in, and put Hanson's in, and then we're gonna revisit this in two seconds. It's not closed yet. We have to vote this. Last night, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent went to Board of Selectmen in Whitman, and they voted in the positive to propose a state of, state, a statement of interest for the replacement of Whitman Middle School. This is a process that takes somewhere between two and five years before there's any cost. The selectmen voted to approve, I believe, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I entertain a motion from this committee to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Bob, there's language for this. It's a formal vote. It's this page, it's the page after the...
I think I have it.
Can you see it?
Do I have to read it in? Having convened an open meeting April 10, 2019, prior to the SOA submission closing date, the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee and the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, have voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Mass School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 12, 2019, for the Whitman Middle School, located at 100 Coffell Avenue in Whitman, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority in the future for replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facilities and systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, ventilation systems, and to increase conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Mass School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Mass School Building Authority, and /or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Mass School Building Authority. That is the vote in the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Easy one. Acceptance of gifts.
Bob, can I just say?
Hang on.
Based upon the fact that we did set an assessment, but it might be dependent on an override, pink slips are still gonna have to be issued, okay? Just letting the association know.
Thank you all for coming as you're filing out. Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, we have. I don't believe an override can occur.
I don't either.
So I'm just saying, I don't think an override can occur, though. Well, based upon the...
I don't believe so either.
No, put them out.
Yeah, we still have to do what we have to do.
You gotta do it, absolutely. Yep, yep.
Here is the gift. Give this to Simon Act and Chairman Hayes. This February, the students of Deval Elementary participated in our second annual Booster Thon Glow Run. Thanks to the donations from friends, families, and businesses, we were able to raise over $22,000 to fund capital improvements at our building. Primary goal of this fundraising effort was to purchase air conditioning units for several of our classrooms. After working with Ernie Sandlin, whose help has been extraordinary, we have determined that we can install units in 17 classrooms for a price of no more than $19,000. This will include the cost of the units themselves, and any wiring and fencing needed as deemed necessary by Mr. Sandlin. With the permission of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee, we are asking to pay for this project from our account. If you have any further questions on this matter, you may contact me directly. Sincerely, Marshall Otina, co-treasurer of Deval PTO. Marshall, I think you're here, correct? Can you come up? You're asking us to accept $19,000 correctly, not $22,000.
No, so it's, so it's the rule being directly, and some is not to exceed $19,000. Ernie actually found us some savings even just yesterday, so it's, we're committed to donate up to $19,000.
Okay. So the gift we're going to be accepting is $19,000.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Mr. Colletti.
Marshall, I'm sure he checked with Ernie, but are these gonna be green, efficient machines going into the system?
I'm sure, based upon everything Ernie does.
Ernie's here.
Yeah, we've been in for months on this, and...
Come on up. We're talking about efficiency, I think.
The green, I wanna make sure we're still in the green.
The green, green.
Are the Energy Star rated?
They are, they are, and actually, the 24,000 BTU window air conditioners, and it's the Energy Star.
Do we know what impact it's going to be to the Deval School for the electricity budget?
Well, I knew you would ask that question. So with the air conditioner on, just like we're doing at Hanson Middle, the outdoor, the Univents will be turned off. So what we're gonna do during the April school vacation, the reason we're doing that, to see how we can get this new AC in there, how it's gonna function, and also to look at the energy cost. So we're slated to do that. Marshall and the PTO have given us permission to purchase one. We'll do the installation during the April school vacation, and then we'll identify what we're gonna be using for energy costs. Right now, I see it as a wash, with the Univents off, because the AC's on, it's transferring air from the outside to the inside, chilling that air, and we'll find out. So we're gonna put a meter on that, one we're installing, and we're gonna know exactly the question that you're asking.
All right. Plus, Christine, didn't, you were able to secure a better rate for electricity than what we were paying when the other provider went out of business?
Correct.
So that should be...
I just wanna make sure we're still in the red.
Any other questions before we move to the vote? All those in favor?
Yep.
unanimous. Marshall, thank you, and the committee, and the kids that raised, that's a fabulous amount. Thank you. I have three field trips. First one, eighth grade, Washington DC class trip, June 3rd to June 7th. They're going to DC, it's educational, 115 students. We have a host of chaperones, about 12.
Which one is that, though?
They will not need a school nurse, it is emergency personnel provided. I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Bob, I'm abstaining.
Mr. O'Brien's abstaining.
That's why I'm abstaining. That is why. I'm not teaching, I'm paramedic on the trip. You wanna go?
All right.
That's why.
Next one, Whitman Middle School, grade eight trip, New York and Philadelphia, approximately 150 students. 16 chaperones. They will be needing substitute coverage. Transportation is not needed, they're providing, and a school nurse is going to be needed for this trip.
We don't, they don't have a Robbie O'Brien.
What, you know something? You wanna go? You wanna go twice?
I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Okay. I'm gonna run right through these, being the late hour that it is. Warrant Subcommittee, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March 28.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor? I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the 29th of March, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Policy Subcommittee has met.
Nope.
Facilities met it before the last meeting.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct, we haven't...
No report. Legislative update?
I think I pretty much gave it. House Ways and Means is out. Regional transportation, out of House Ways and Means is 5%. We're still looking for more. Hopefully, we'll get better news out of the Senate. There was some charter increase, which really doesn't affect us. Homeless transportation is up about $1 million statewide, so we might see a little, little bit of additional reimbursement, and they're up to $30 per pupil. There also is something that I confined in there, and I will look harder tomorrow for social, social and emotional grants, that at least Ways and Means has in there, so...
Okay. You carried away my...
You found it.
We got, we got a couple more things. Pilgrimage collaborative report?
We met last Thursday. We presented our treasurer with the evaluation, which went really well. Our executive director is still carrying through with her entry plan and the strategic plan, and we are looking at some point to purchase a school building, so that we can confine a lot of what we have out in member towns and other areas into one facility for pilgrimage area.
I've got one for you, Quan School.
Hanson has one for sale.
We'll take it, I'll give you a deal on that.
We found a candidate already.
Wasn't that?
Wasn't that.
Any questions for Mr. Boyce? I have three votes on the certified, now that I have the numbers, we're moving back to, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, we're moving back to the numbers. To approve the operating assessment to the town of Whitman for the FY 2020 budget in accordance with pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4, Paragraph D and E, and Mass General Law, small c, 71, 16B, at $14,928,958. Entertain a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Small? To approve the operating assessment to the town of Hanson for the FY 2020 budget in accordance with the pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4, Paragraph D and E, Mass General Law, small c, 71, 16B, at $10,027,058. Entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? This is the total. To certify the...
Want to oppose? Want to opposition?
Oh, I'm sorry. To certify the FY 2020 budget in accordance with the pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4, Paragraph D and E, Mass General Law, small c, into at $24,956,467, approving the FY 20 assessments in accordance with the pre-K Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4, Paragraph D and E, with Mass General Law, small c, 16B, as follows, and to certify the total... Law, small c, 16B, as follows, and to certify the total budget at $56,699,127. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose?
Yeah, he did.
$52,69...
That was a good try. Awesome try.
Michelle, come on. Where's she get that kinda money at JFK Library? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't forget Whitman's Wednesday night for all the departments to plead their case. People should try to show up to that if they don't know what is going on.
It's Wednesday night?
It was moved to Wednesday night instead of Saturday.
Is it official, though?
I haven't heard anything yet.
I haven't seen anything officially.
We'll get it out there. I don't know.
Second.